I call to order the meeting of the Pasadena Independent Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, June 23, 2020 by telephonic or video conferences in accordance with suspension of certain provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act as authorized by the Governor of Texas and the state's attorney general at 5:34 p.m. Board members present, Ms. Marcell Keano, Mr. Fred Roberts, Mrs. Nelda Sullivan, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, and myself, Vicki Morgan. Board members absent, Mr. Jack Bailey. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation tonight will be given by Mr. Marshall Kendrick and the pledges by Mr. Fred Roberts. Please stand.
Pray with me. Father, we come to you today thankful for the many blessings of life. We thank you for this district and for leadership that's been shown for the last several months in very difficult times. We thank for our superintendent who's been ahead of things and dealt directly with the state and with commissioner to get us up to date on where we need to be and where we're going. We thank you for the few cases that we've had of the virus. We thank you for all the work that's been done to satisfy educational academic needs of our students. Father, we thank you for our health. We thank you for our nation. We pray especially for our nation tonight. It is in a state of uproar and lawlessness that we've never seen. We pray that you'll give divine guidance to our city and to our state and to our national leaders, guide them and direct them, and we pray for a change of hearts of people that only you can do. Father, we pray for Jack and his mother. She's going through a tough time, and we pray for that family. We pray for good results and for healing and for her to get better so she can move to a different place. She's doing better, and we thank you for that as a national prayer. We thank you for all of our employees. Thank you for our people that need your assistance right now in our district, some that we don't know, some that we do. Just watch over and guide us. Be with those who serve in uniform wherever they are, that you'll protect them and their families as they stand as a thin red line, blue line for us. Father, thank you for this district. Thank you for this board, and thank you for what you do for each one of us. Can we ask, amen?
Amen.
The pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is states, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and invisible.
We're going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer employee or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee concerning matters related to the superintendent's recommendations to hire administrative personnel and/or the superintendent's recommendations related to renewals, nonrenewals, and terminations of contracts for professional personnel. 551.071, 551.074, and 551.0821 for the purpose of considering and/or seeking the advice through the district's attorneys regarding a mediation agreement in A.G. versus Pasadena ISD, Texas Education Agency Docket Number 081-DM-0320 and related actions. 551.071, to consult with the district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorneys duty to the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility clearly conflicts with the Open Meetings Act, to seek the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or a settlement offer and/or to consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We'll reconvene as quickly as we can in open session, hopefully by 7 o'clock p.m. Madam Superintendent, special recognition.
Yes, I think Mrs. Morgan, you're up first with a special recognition, so I'll turn it back over to you.
Apologize. Too loud.
Mr. Kendrick, if you'd come forward, please. We'll present you with the gavel for this last year and thank you for the honor and grace that you gave to board presidency. We all depended on you. You never let us down. Thank you.
All right, board members. Well, first of all, I'll make sure my volume is correct. We have a special recognition today. Texas closure of schools, as you know, canceled many, many of our sporting and academic competitions, but I want you to know that all 10 of our PISD Intermediate Schools have planned to compete in local and regional academic pentathlon competitions. The Texas State Academic Pentathlon Office organized an opportunity for schools to participate in a statewide online pentathlon competition, and one of our Pasadena ISD schools rose to the challenge, and that was Beverly Hills Intermediate. So I'm going to turn it over to our proud principal, Mrs. Stacy Barber, also our Principal of the Year, and she, along with her pentathlon coach, Grant Pector, and they will show us how they did it. So take it away.
Hello, everybody. At Beverly Hills, we are so lucky to have four dedicated pentathlon coaches. They are Grant Pector, Matt Hickerson, Brandy Canoust, and Melanie Malden. Each year, these coaches go above and beyond to make sure our students are prepared and successful, not only in the classroom, but also with extracurricular activities like the steam fair, chess, DT projects, and pentathlon, just to name a few. This year was no different. Amongst the turmoil inflicted upon the 1920 school year by COVID-19, five truly dedicated BHI students braved the challenges of distance learning and were determined to compete in this year's state academic pentathlon competition. These five students made a competitive statement that let everyone in the state of Texas know Beverly Hills Intermediate and Pasadena ISD are to be reckoned with. At this time, I would like to introduce Dr. Pector. He and the rest of our coaches are an integral part of Beverly Hills and continue to push students to do their personal best each and every day. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Pector. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to start by reading our first student. We have our additional coaches online tonight, and they've all been assigned to read some of the other students that competed in the recent competition. Our first student is Joy Menahem. Joy is a seventh grade student who participated in the honors division of the online academic pentathlon competition. She placed 14th in state. Joy is a straight A student who excels in all academic subjects. She is a member of the BHI varsity girls choir, chess team, and drama club. Joy's other accolades this year included spelling bee champion, top cheer alto in region choir, BHI top readers, and recipient of the Daughters of the Republic Award. She also helps Ms. Barber deliver our morning announcements.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to introduce the next student. His name is Omar Santos Fuentes. Omar is a seventh grade student who participated in the scholastic division of the online academic pentathlon competition. He placed fourth in the state, receiving a gold medal in social studies and a bronze medal in science. Omar is a student who excels in all academic subjects. He is also a member of the BHI boys choir and chess club. Omar also enjoys playing competitive soccer outside of school.
Good evening. I'll be speaking to you about Jean Carlos Alvarez. Jean Carlos is an eighth grade student who participated in the scholastic division of the online academic pentathlon state competition. He placed 26th in the state. Jean Carlos is a student who excels in English, language arts, and art. He is also a member of the BHI news crew.
Linda Pham. Linda is an eighth grade student who participated in the honors division of the online academic pentathlon competition. She placed 10th in state. Linda is a straight A student who excels in all academic subjects. She is a violinist in one of BHI's top orchestras, a member of the BHI National Junior Honor Society, and a member of BHI's chess club. She was also this year's recipient of the Herb Smith Award.
And finally, Sabrina Pector. Sabrina is an eighth grade student who participated in the honors division of the online academic pentathlon state competition. She placed third in the state, receiving a silver medal for social science, bronze medal for science, and bronze medal for language arts. Sabrina is a straight A student who excels in all academic subjects. She is a member of BHI's top band and vice president of National Junior Honor Society. Sabrina's other accolades this year include First Chair Bassoon All-City, First Chair Bassoon Region, and recipient of the American Legion, Stephanie Wright, and Duane Miles Outstanding Service Awards.
Well, thank you very much. I don't know if we have Ms. Barber coming back on, board members, but very proud principal of some fine students and fine coaches who brought a lot of great recognition to PISD. Oh, sorry, back up, back up during this crazy time. So congratulations, students. Congratulations, coaches, and thank you, Beverly Hills Intermediate.
We also don't want to forget the parents who helped these students to succeed, and we congratulate those parents and thank you as well.
Well, board members, next we have an exciting award to present. This is the fourth consecutive year for our purchasing department to be awarded the TASBO Award of Merit for Purchasing Operations. The Texas Association of School Business Officials, TASBO, created the award in 2009 to recognize those school districts, open enrollment charter schools, and regional educational service centers in the state that achieved excellence in purchasing operations. Derek Gillard, our Director of Purchasing, and Lori Pruitt, the Assistant Director of Purchasing, oversee the daily functions of the purchasing department, and they ensure that PISD purchases are made legally, ethically, and follow federal, state, and local laws. TASBO's Award of Merit for Purchasing Operations was presented to Pasadena ISD at a private ceremony during the annual TASBO conference in Houston on March 5, 2020. You barely made the COVID deadline. Awesome. The award was given to only 41 school districts of roughly 1,000 school districts in the entire state. So congratulations to Derek and his team, and I think you have something to present to him, and we will not shake hands, but if you want to come up, we'll... Thank you for all you do. Quick picture. I don't know if we have the picture still up there or not.
Congratulations, Derek.
So, well, actually, you can see Derek featured here in this picture, and the reason is because he was voted in during the annual conference to be on the Board of Directors for TASBO. So he's serving a three-year term, and he will represent Pasadena ISD in matters of school finance, school compliance, and legislation. So congratulations, Derek, and to your entire purchasing staff and all their hard work. They've been working their tails off during COVID, that's for sure, and I know that will continue. So great job.
And I can say I knew him when he was a little boy. He's come a long way. Congratulations, Derek.
We have another outstanding staff member that's worked her tail off as well during COVID, let's just say. I don't know how you've stayed sane during all this, but y'all know Mary Harriman and the work she does, but she's the Director of Child Nutrition Services, and since 2013, the Texas Department of Agriculture, which we had a nice conversation with this morning, has recognized schools for their efforts to bring local foods and agricultural education to their students. Almost 20% of Texas school districts participated in the Texas Farm Fresh Challenge this year. That's a tongue twister. This is the sixth year Pasadena ISD has been awarded the TDA Local Products Challenge Award, and we're one of the very few school districts that took the challenge to the highest level and achieved the Best of the Bunch recognition statewide. So come on up, Mary, and be recognized.
Congratulations.
Awesome job.
Get you a picture.
This is all in addition to serving, what, right at about a million mils since COVID? 800,000 mils since COVID hit. Awesome job, as always, and that is what we have for special recognition, but that was very special.
Yes, it was. Thank you, Dr. Powell. Okay, we're moving to public comments, and we have none this evening. So let's move to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of additional personnel... No, no, I'm sorry. Consideration and approval of administrative personnel. Ms. Keano.
Madam President, I move to approve addendums AA through L.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Keano, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Ms. Keano.
We have quite a few to introduce this evening. The first, I would like to welcome back Ms. Yadi King for the position of Counselor of the Early College High School at Dobie High School. Congratulations to you, Ms. King. Do you have any family you would like to introduce with you this evening?
Absolutely. This is my youngest child. This is Connor, and he's very excited to come back home as well.
Welcome back. We're really excited to have you again.
Thank you.
Our next one is Nikisha Dickey for the position of School Counselor at the Summit. Congratulations.
Thank you. This is my son right here, CJ. Today is his birthday. He turned 14. What do you say? Say thank you. Thank y'all so much for this opportunity.
Congratulations. You're not going very far.
I know. I love your wild work. I'm so happy to be there, and to continue to stay there.
But we love you to stay there as well, so congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Next, we'd like to welcome back Ms. Olga Sanchez for the position of Counselor at Tegler Career Center.
Thank you so much. I'm super excited to be back.
Yay. Congratulations. Do you have anybody you'd like to introduce this evening?
Yes, I do. I have, hopefully you can see him. I have my husband here with me, Philip Sanchez, longtime PISD member as well, and I'm lucky to have my mom and my dad. They've been with me since COVID, and I'm taking care of them, so all good. So thank you so much. Thrilled to be back. It's a blessing, Pasadena's home, and I'm super excited.
Congratulations.
Wonderful. Congratulations. We're lucky to have you back as well.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have congratulations to Belila Turner for the position of Counselor at Jessup Elementary.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. These are my girls. I feel humbled for the acceptance for this position. This is my oldest, Kristen, my youngest, London, and my middle child, Addison. I also have my grandmother watching, my mom, my aunt, and my friend, Sean, watching, and I just am so excited.
Next, we have a big congratulations and welcome to PISD, Dr. Jessica Favor for the position of Audiologist.
Hi. Thank you so much.
Would you like to introduce someone behind you there?
Yeah, this is my husband, Jim Favor.
Hello.
Thank y'all for the opportunity.
Welcome. We're excited to have you, and welcome to Pasadena ISD.
Aw, thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Next, welcome to Pasadena ISD, Mr. Daniel Michelson for the position of Education Diagnostician with Special Education. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's my honor to be here.
Do you have anybody with you today?
I'm playing solo tonight, but we're all very thrilled.
Well, congratulations. You have a big family to come to, so we're excited to have you.
Thank you.
That's just the background. I don't think he's in your room.
Last year.
Next, welcome to Pasadena ISD, Ms. Adrian Wilkins for the position of Licensed Specialist.
Hi. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity. I'm excited to be here.
We are excited to have you. Do you have anybody with you this evening?
I have my husband, Sean.
Hey, man.
And I'm out with some friends, so they're at the board meeting too. Glad to be here. Thanks for the opportunity.
Well, welcome to Pasadena ISD. We're excited to have you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to Randy Elliott for the position of Assistant Principal for Community School. Congratulations.
Hello. Thank you.
And you have some people to introduce behind you.
I do. I have my parents here, Bonnie and Dawn Hacker. Actually, I should say Dr. Bonnie Hacker. My mom's a retired school administrator. And my daughter, McKenna, and my grandson, Nolan, is the guest of honor. So I also have a lot of my current Maverick family, which is getting me kind of emotional. I've seen a lot of my Team Maverick online and some of my new community school team, so I'm super excited.
As they say, once you're magical, it's magical, right?
That's right.
Well, congratulations to you. We're excited.
Thank you.
And congratulations to Ms. Natalie Feller for the position of Instructional Specialist ELAR K through 2.
Hi. This is my husband, Stetson Feller. I just want to say thank you so much for allowing me to have this opportunity and serve Pasadena in this capacity. I'm so excited.
We are very excited for you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations to Jennifer Morton for the position of Instructional Specialist 5 through 8th Grade, Social Studies with Instruction.
Thank you.
And I know you have some people to introduce. Are you?
I do. So my husband is here, James Morton, and then my daughters, Ava and Emma. Thank you, guys, so much for this opportunity. I'm very excited.
We are very excited for you, just like they are.
I can see the two brothers.
And congratulations to Ray Lynn Teis for the new position of Assistant Principal at Golden Acres Elementary School. Congratulations.
I'm so excited, and I am very happy to move into this next position.
I don't see anybody behind you, but do you have anybody that I may be missing?
No, they're in the other room, not being quiet, so they were kicked out.
I totally get it. Congratulations to you. Congratulations to Trevor Parker for the position of Assistant Principal at Pasadena High School.
Thank you very much. I do have my family around the table. This is my son, Corbin. And I would like to express my gratitude to Jessica Swenson and Gail Ward and everybody at South Houston Intermediate who has contributed to my professional growth, and I've been calling that place home the last five years. And also thank you to Lori Gomez and everybody at Pasadena for welcoming me to the next stage of my adventurous career. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Do you want to say something, Fred?
Hey, Trevor.
Yes, sir.
What's your hair like?
I've even brushed my hair and everything. Thanks for noticing.
Congratulations. And welcome back to Lorena Carrasco for the position of Principal at El F Smith Elementary School.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me back. There's no place like home, and I just want to say thank you. I can't wait to meet the family of El F Smith Elementary. And I have with me my son, Massimo Carrasco, who is also a Pasadena ISD student, and my sister, Ortencia. She is a counselor at Miller Intermediate, and her family, my nephews, and Marty Melcher, her husband. Thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity.
Welcome back. We're excited for good things at El F Smith.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is consideration and possible approval of additional personnel and reclassifications for the 2021, 2020, 2021 school year. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion?
For board members, as you know, I just wanted to say real quick that these tie to some of the other agenda items, like the new software for the business office and HR, a lot of our special ed and pre-K growth, the fact that we're going to need so much technology for this next year as we discussed about school restart, and then the extra athletic stipends are only if, of course, we play. And the only ones we know that are needed are a few at Dobie and Memorial, so we're just putting more in the bank in case we need them, and if we did need them, you would be notified. So these are just stipends for growth in our programs, but as y'all know, with so many unknowns with COVID, we may not need a dime of this. But if we do, you would be notified that we do.
Did you have a question? It's all answered. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of the On-Site Clinic, CSP Number 20P-032LP.
Show me the load.
Second. Okay. Motion? Motion?
I think that we need to add who it's going to.
So Carla and Tony aren't in here, but do y'all want to come on the screen? It's H2 Wellness Center. If you want to talk about that, Tony Lopez. I'm going to bring you up on the screen.
Yes, ma'am. So it is HCA. They're the current provider for our clinic, and they call themselves H2U Wellness, their actual clinic piece, but it's a part of HCA.
So on the agenda item, did they need to say the name of the hospital and, of course, organization, or is the CSP clearing that up?
The CSP is clearing that up, I believe.
Okay, we can add that if you want to add it into the agenda and just clarify, but it's on the CSP. We have HCA, and we have H2U Wellness Center on the CSP.
Okay. This is to include H2A and HC... H... what is it?
H2U Wellness Center.
H2U Wellness Center and HCA?
Is over that.
Is over that.
Through that, yes.
It's the parent company.
Parent company.
Okay. So that's added.
And it's on the CSP.
Yes, correct. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration, possible approval of four one-on-one desktop technicians for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion?
So, board members, again, as you know, you've been gracious enough to approve some computers. We'll probably have to come back for some additional. But as we prepare for this new school year, you approved two desktop technicians just a minute ago. You approved two earlier this summer. So this would mean bring them on right now to Image and get those computers ready and ready to go out to the campuses and get in the hands of students.
Very good. Discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
Some of our students still have their computers.
Yes, and those will remain their computers. The elementary kiddos never had computers during this crisis part of COVID education. So we're looking to put computers in the homes of pre-K through 4th grade.
Oh, wow.
And those students that promote up to other schools will lay carry those computers with them.
Yes. Some swapped them out, and they were given instructions. The parents were given instructions on how to do that. If they didn't take advantage of it, that will happen on the first day once we get those students back. But we have a lot of summer challenges going on and a lot of participation this summer with using the technology.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. We didn't vote on this, did we, Susan? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, no. Motion carries. I don't know. Did we, did I name the person? Okay, let's go back to number three, which is consideration and possible approval of the onsite clinic, as stated previously. And I think it was Mr. Fernandez made the motion. Who seconded that motion?
Maricel.
Maricel? Ms. Keano? Okay, let's revote on it to make it right. So any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay, now we're on record, right, Susan? Let's move. We have for information only certified personnel and support personnel, and that's in your book. Moving to the educational section, consideration and possible approval of purchase of LAS language testing licenses and scoring services from Data Recognition Corporation, DRC, for initial identification and reclassification of English learners. So move. Second. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion?
What is LAS? Is that the name of the company or is it an acronym for something?
Well, I knew you were going to ask that. Language Acquisition System. And I'm going to ask this via COVID expense. I've already talked to Carla about putting that on the COVID expenses and trying to get reimbursement, because these are kids that normally would have finished TellPass had we stayed in school, but they didn't get the opportunity. And we want to be able to let them test so we can reclass them for the new school year. Otherwise, they get stuck in the system where they were at and not moved on through the levels. So again, this is a language acquisition system that we can use remotely and, of course, get kids where they need to be for the new year.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of the 2020, 20 through 2, boy, 2020 through 2025 interlocal agreement with Pasadena ISD and the University of Houston Graduate College of Social Work. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is for information only, to provide the School Health Advisory Committee SHAC report. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, we do. And I believe Amber or Elise Neff, Amber McNish or Elise Neff will be making that presentation. So they'll be pulling that up on the screen.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. This is Elise.
Wonderful.
What a year it has been, one that will certainly never be forgotten. Missed over 50 days of school this year because of COVID-19. And even though we missed all of those days, we were still able to accomplish so much to the District School Health Advisory Council. The wellness policy was developed and put into place in 2017. Every three years, an evaluation of the wellness policy has to be reported to the school board and posted for the general public. The triennial report has been completed and is available online. This year, we utilized the Alliance for Healthier Generations Healthy School Programs to evaluate the district wellness policy and aligned it to the Excellence and Wellness Award. Each campus is responsible for using the Alliance for a Healthier Generations Healthy School Program to assess how well they are implementing the wellness policy. We continue to use these results to drive district-level support in coordinated school health and wellness programming, which included the Excellence and Wellness Award. We successfully, we successfully held four SHAC meetings despite COVID-19. Three meetings were face-to-face and one was virtual. We had a parent designate from each campus to ensure parent involvement and also had a great mixture of community members. This year, we decided to try breakout groups to encourage more engagement. With smaller groups, parents felt more comfortable giving input and asking questions. We have continued to build strong relationships with community partners who want the best for our students and their families. We could have not done this without the support of MD Anderson and Shell Oil through the Pasadena Vibrant Community Initiative. We have successfully completed year three of the grant with a focus on safe routes to school, employee wellness, recess, and PE. The Alliance for a Healthier Generation named 355 schools from 23 states as America's healthiest schools based on the number of best practices they have implemented related to children's health. Four campuses from Pasadena ISD earned the title for 2019. Red Bluff, Sparks, Turner, and South Houston High School. November 16th was an exciting day. We were able to build not one, but two playgrounds. Through the Pasadena Vibrant Community Initiative, we were able to build a playground at Young Elementary. The second playground was built at Atkinson Elementary. We were able to complete this build through Kaboom. Atkinson not only got a playground, but garden beds, a prairie pocket, a small trail that is in between the playground and newly planted local trees. It is also, it also has its own watering system that uses collected rainwater. It is truly one of a kind. Recession guidelines were put into place in the 2019-2020 school year. The guidelines were included in the students' handbooks, and the health, PE, and wellness team supported campus recess efforts with faculty and staff training resources and videos. We were able to hold 13 successful walk-to-school events at Fraser, Freeman, Cruz, Metter, Gardens, Red Bluff, Ritchie, Sparks, Stutchberry, Turner, Williams, Morris, and Malelo. We had four others that were planned for the spring but had to cancel because of COVID-19. With the SHAC support, we updated videos to support our current health curricula, basic and weight training, and reviewed opioid addiction and abuse curricula through EverFi. The health and PE teachers utilized various technology platforms to stay connected with their students and to promote physical activity and healthy behaviors during distance learning. The elementary PE teachers shared physical activity options with students via a calendar and promoted healthy activities with Facebook, Zoom, Seesaw, and Clever. The middle school PE teachers promoted their health and physical activity calendars through Odysseyware. The intermediate and high school PE teachers shared workout logs and courses were available in Edge Annuity, Schoology, or Google Classroom. ACE was able to host their Fall Health Fair at South Houston Elementary. They had 250 students and family members learn from our local healthcare providers and participated in various activities. They also partnered with the Houston Food Bank to create food distribution sites at Decevala and Miller, providing fresh produce, meats, and canned goods for the community. And in February, the Fifth Annual Family Engagement Conference provided over 140 parent sessions, such as social-emotional learning, academic support, internet safety, college and career, and drug and alcohol prevention. Through a partnership with Healthy Living Matters Pasadena, the health, PE, and wellness team, and Pasadena Vibrant Communities, seven of the cycle 10 ACE after-school programs received training, curriculum, and garden beds. The after-school programs implemented the curriculum to create school gardens that have flourished despite the pandemic. A few of the amazing custodians at Williams Elementary cared for the gardens while everyone was gone and was able to grow some super vegetables to show the students. The summer ACE program has continued to offer its services for students virtually, like the herb garden that the Shaw students are able to grow in their home. The school behavioral services and counseling teams have also been very busy. Community resources and mental health partners, Triad, Harris County, Harris Center, and Clear Hope were invited to participate in SHAC meetings and provide valuable information. School Behavioral Services, HPE team, and Counseling Services worked to collaborate to support social-emotional learning, physical activity, and behavioral supports. They were able to create a new district social-emotional learning website, and social-emotional learning skills were supported during COVID. Once again, we have some amazing counselors that earned the CREST Award for Counseling Excellence. These campuses engage their counselors to provide students with the classroom guidance, college and career readiness, and social-emotional skills needed to be academically successful and well-prepared for life. They are from Burnett, Freeman, Metter, Red Roberts Middle School, Keller Middle School, and Schneider Middle School. Nutrition Services was given the opportunity to partner with Brighter Bites in a taste testing for Mango Tango Salsa. Pasadena ISD is the first district that Brighter Bites has collaborated with on this scale. There were 47 campuses that participated. Students also played Mango Tango Tag in PE, making it a school-wide, coordinated school health event. Child Nutrition has served over 720 meals since the shutdown due to COVID-19. They also participated in the Stop the Bleed and CPR training, health fairs, math and science nights, and provided many special lunches for students, families, and staff. The nutrition services team are truly superheroes. And they do it with a smile and sometimes a cool hat. And that is why our Nutrition Services Department was awarded the Best of the Bench Award by Texas Department of Agriculture for the sixth year in a row. This year, Health Services worked to meet the requirements of two new laws. House Bill 496 requires all campuses, campus staff, to take Stop the Bleed training, and students in 7th through 12th grade will be offered hands-on training on the use of tourniquets to stop life-threatening bleeding, beginning in 2020, 2021. And House Bill 684 requires all school district employees who work with students to take a 50-minute seizure, first aid, and recognition course through the Epilepsy Foundation. And of course, our Health Services Department also provided our district with invaluable guidance during COVID-19. In 2020, 2021, the SHAC would like to utilize the triennial report for SHAC planning for 2020, 2021, begin working on a district-wide, comprehensive school physical activity plan, continue to support recess through training and education on the recess guidelines, create safety guidelines for PE and recess, continue with the Pasadena Vibrant Community Initiative Grant in the final year, which would include installing a playground at May Smith Elementary and a track at Sparks Elementary. Continue to collaborate with the SHAC Executive Committee to support the needs of the whole child through the whole school, whole community, whole child model, and continue to educate faculty and staff members. Thank you so much for your support this past year. We look forward to our continued work in and around Pasadena ISD.
Okay, let's move to consideration and possible approval of the Pasadena Vibrant Community Initiative continuation of services agreement.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of waivers to use alternative kindergarten and grade 7 reading instruments due to COVID-19. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of the Superintendent's Action to accept the grant award and execute the Special Education Fiscal Support Performance Contract between Pasadena ISD and the Texas Education Service Center of Region 20. Wow. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the interlocal agreement between the Pasadena ISD and the Harris County Community Youth Services to provide a youth service specialist for the summit.
So move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the grant award for 2019-2020 TEA Summer Career and Technical Education Grant in the amount of $50,000. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion?
How are we going to do this with COVID this summer?
Most everything that we're doing is virtual, but I'm sure Dr. Hickman is on here. Karen, if you want to talk about the TEA Summer Career and Technical Education Grant, or if Tanya is on.
I'm here. Yes, it's all virtual. They're doing several camps virtually this summer, and they are not bringing kids in to do this.
Right. Thank you.
They're in virtual tours of CGHS and different career paths and those kinds of things.
Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2020-2021 TEA Services to Students with Autism Grant in the amount of $995,220, and the approval of the 2020-2021 TEA Services to Students with Autism Grant-funded positions. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion?
Dr. Powell, is this going to be centered in one location? Or are these people going to go to different locations, or has that been determined yet?
Most of them, as far as the administrative or some of the assistant behavior analysts would be district-wide, but Karen or Debbie, do you want to talk about the details of where they would be housed and utilized during the grant?
Debbie, are you there?
Yes, I am.
All right, go ahead, Debbie.
Okay, so we'll have three different programs run through this grant, and the programs will be housed at almost all of our self-contained autism units for most severe students. And so the BCBA's will be working with the teachers to help enhance their skill level. And so it'll affect almost every school that has a self-contained ABLE program. And it will also be very directed at early childhood autism.
We're hearing more and more about autism these days. Do you have a number of how many students that we have that fit in this criteria?
I do not have that on right in front of me, but you are correct that we have more and more students that are qualifying in the area of autism. And we have added, and you guys have approved, units for the last couple of years. So we've added a great deal of students in the area of autism.
Debbie, you can get them that number this week.
I can absolutely get you that number. I can get you that number in five minutes.
Thank you very much, Debbie. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is student achievements. We've certainly recognized some of those earlier in the evening, but we have no other at this point in time. Policy Section. point in time. Policy section, none. Financial section, consideration and possible approval of budget amendments for May. So move. Motion by Ms. Sullivan. Who was that?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion?
Page 115, under Budget Amendment, talks about fund balance and swapping over the Southeast construction. And it's a move of $2,731,000 and $679. It talks about, says, take budget out of fund balance of Southeast and Haskell Auditorium seating replacement. And then it says, bond the HVAC upgrade phase and land swap for Thompson.
Those are all board-approved actions that y'all have done in recent months. We're replacing the auditorium seating at that particular school. We did have a need to upgrade Bondi's HVAC. We've had a lot of issues this year with that. And then we've talked about the land purchase for the new Thompson intermediate. So Carla, do you want to talk about why you're moving those funds and where they're headed?
Yes, it's required that we move it over to, because we've approved these, the board did, and so we have to identify because we're moving it from fund balance. And so we have to show it for audit purposes that we have removed it from fund balance and recognize that we're fixing to have this expense. So we're just moving it from fund balance to the expense. And yes, it was approved in prior months at the board meetings.
That's just the grand total of those.
Right. What was the amount of each one? And what was the land? How much was the land swap? What did that cost us?
You want to go?
How much?
Just remember what that cost each.
The land swap was $1 million.
Bondi was about a million.
Yes. Don't have the totals in front of me, but I can get those.
It was over a million, Bondi was. And then the rest was the seating, which wasn't, it was 290. I'd have to.
You know what? Seems like we replaced the seating at Southeast and Haskell.
You know, the only thing we've done, those are the old, original seats, but the only thing we've done over there is they had some Harvey damage, so they got some new flooring. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin. And they got a new stage curtain that looks beautiful. And then those gosh-awful seats. I mean, they're just hideous. And they're broken. And they just, if you, you know, visit there, you just feel like they're sticking out like a sore thumb. Because they had some upgrades around them, but they were never touched.
Yeah, thank you.
Other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of investment brokers and dealers to engage in investment transactions with the district.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of an order authorizing the issuance of Pasadena ISD Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds in one or more series, setting certain parameters for the bonds, authorizing a pricing officer to approve the amount, the interest rate, price, including the terms thereof, and certain other procedures and provisions related thereto. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion.
So board members, there were lots of questions about this agenda item. So Carla, do you want to introduce who else on the call and then take questions from there?
Yes, I have John Robuck from VOK. I have Rick Witt and Tanya Fisher from the law firm. This is just the refunding. The next one is the one that had most of the questions over the liquidity agreement. And so I have all three of them on the call, so we're here to answer any kind of questions that y'all might have over our two items.
John, no, who was here? She can't see them.
Yeah. So this is going to be an interest saving to the district on this one that we've just approved.
Yes, ma'am. $11.1 million, and that's to do a refunding on one of our bonds. Yes, ma'am.
Right.
Other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of an order approving a third amendment to a standby bond purchasing agreement and an amended and restated fee letter, both relating to Pasadena ISD Variable Rate Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds Series 2005B and enacting other provisions related thereto. Second. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of a resolution concerning the annual investment policy and investment strategy review.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, I believe. Was that you, Kenny?
Yes.
Okay. Seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of a resolution 2020, 2021, accepting all of Volume 1 and the Pasadena ISD portion of Volume 2 of the Harris County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Action Plan.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion.
Dr. Powell, why? There's only two school districts listed in this, and San Jacinto College wasn't a part of it. And I was confused as to why.
So we got an invitation to participate in this, and Carla reminded me that I sent her to several meetings, that she got a lot of good information on how we could partner in this. She submitted a plan on how we could benefit as a district if we were given funds related to preventing flooding. And I don't know, Carla, if you want to talk about specifics of it, but she took the bull by the horns and submitted about $90 million worth of costs related to how we could prevent flooding. Some things as needed as generators at our campuses, all the way to a new Thompson and new Stutchberry.
Wow.
So Carla, do you want to say anything else about this aggressive proposal?
Yes. When we first started, in our first meeting, there were several school districts there. All the big ones were there and several little ones. But the paperwork was so great that several school districts dropped out. And in the end, it was us and Huffman were the only ones that were left. And I feel that they just dropped out because of the amount of work that we had to put in to file for this. And when we had to look at, we had to come up with a plan on how could, what would help the school. And I had to stop and look at, where did we have our biggest expenses from the Harvey flooding? And so I asked for the generators for every campus, because we had lost our food at every campus. So we asked for generators for all those. We asked for mold equipment, because we spent a lot of money on trying to get the mold out of the building. So we asked for that. We asked for the generators. And plus, with Thompson flooding so bad, and Stutchberry right there, I asked either to raise the building or give us a new one. And we preferred that they paid for two new buildings for us. I do not know how much they're going to give us, but we did ask for a little over $90 million. And so we're waiting to see. We can't go any further until we have the actual resolution for FEMA to say how much they're going to pay and who's getting what piece of the pie.
I'd be happy with half of that.
Yeah, really. Carla, thank you for all the hard work you did on this. Good job.
We have to, the board has approved the resolution, and then she'll get feedback from FEMA, and we'll keep y'all posted.
Good. Other discussion?
When will they know when this is going to?
Is there a timeline, Carla?
If it's approved.
They said that after everyone's resolution is approved, and they all have to be approved by the middle of July, then that we should know something within six months after everyone's approval has been done.
Awesome.
So move.
Okay. No more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration and possible award of RF CQ Request for Cooperative Quote Number 20Z-036DG for ERP system.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion.
What is ERP?
So this is going to be our system that we're going to use for HR and business. Sorry about that, Eric. I love getting close to that microphone. So Carla or Tony, do you want to talk about the process that we went through of the new software? This will replace Lawson.
Is it going to replace all of these programs?
Yes, ma'am.
Listed below?
Yes, ma'am.
Plus, I have Derek on here as well. We knew we were having a lot of issues with the Lawson and what we were getting, because it needed to be upgraded. And so we made the decision that either upgrade Lawson or go out for a new software. And at the time, right now, what we have, you can see, we have a lot of different softwares. And we were really looking for one that handled everything, the subsystem, the time and attendance, the budgeting process. And so that's what we were looking for when we went out. We originally sent the bid out, and we got several people that sent a quote back. And then we narrowed it down. We had four people come in, four different groups. They gave us a presentation. We had a big committee present. We narrowed it down to our top two. We looked at how much each one cost, what did they offer the district. And then from those top two, HR and finance, we taken different groups, other school districts that use these softwares. And we called, we did Zoom meetings, because we wanted to see how did they really feel about the software? Because it was close between the top two that we had. And in the end, we felt that Frontline offered us the biggest package, because we could have our substitute system, we could have the employee tracking system, and the budget process. Because right now, as y'all know, when we do salaries, we do everything in Excel. And it takes me two to three months to do a projection on what our salaries are going to be. And with our new software, someone can say, can you tell me how much 5% we give everybody, or just this group or that group? And I can have a number in five minutes. So that is time-saving that we're going to have. And plus, the system that we have now, it's not user-friendly, and it takes a lot of time to get through our processes. So we sat through a lot of meetings, we did a lot of Zoom calls, and we kept it separate. Tony's group voted on what they felt HR was going to be best, and the finance group voted on what we felt would be best for finance. And so in the end, we both agreed, when the tallies came back, that Frontline was our best product that we needed for the district. We also have Frontline on the call tonight, so they're here with us. Derek did a great job negotiating our pricing, trying to get us the best deal we have. It's each year that we pay for this, and so it's not one lump sum that we're paying at one time. And you can see what we currently pay out, so the difference is not going to be that great. And I do have it accounted for in the budget.
If we approve this tonight, can it be in effect by September of this year?
Well, what we will start with is the finance group will go first, and then, and we would like to have us ready, rolling, and fully operational by the fall. And then we'll have all the campuses going. We will have to run a parallel with Lawson and Frontline to begin with. We're looking at bringing payroll over for January, because it's best to wait until we have a full year for the W2s. And then we want to bring HR over in February. And so this way, we'll have everything a seamless process. And we're excited about the new software, and it's going to benefit the district.
Will Frontline have online support, or will it be, will it be support here?
We will have both. To start with, they'll be here, and then we will have online support the entire time.
So by the beginning of next school year, 2021, we should have all systems up, running on the same.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. For information only, the 2020, 2021 proposed budgets.
Yes, board members, Carla's here as well. We've been still working with this, and we've talked, as you know, about what the future holds for the district. We've been trying to get that deficit amount of 16, 285, 220 down. But of course, as you know, we have some great needs related to our COVID, as well as just general budget needs. What we have in here right now is a placeholder of 1.25 for a raise across the board for all employees. That would take our starting teacher salary to about $56,122. Carla, is there anything you wanted to highlight as changes? We have a budget workshop on July 14th. So I just keep bringing this back to show you where we're at in the process, but I thought we would go in deep on the 14th and get your approval for any raises going forward for the new school year. Right now, other districts are ranging from anywhere from 1%, probably a lot of undecided, all the way up to 4% is what I've heard. Anything greater than that that you've heard of, Tony or Carla?
No.
There's always that option too, if things are better. And you approved the 1.25. What you were gracious enough and generous enough to do was to give a little bit of money to our employees at Christmas time, if the budget allowed for that. So that would still be an option for you to have the authority to do later in the year as things pan out. And ADA is known. It's just a lot of unknowns like we've never had before. Yes, ma'am?
How did we arrive at the less students at Snapchat?
That is actually ADA, so attendance. So she kept that flat, Carla. Correct me if I'm wrong. So even with our 53,000 students, we estimate ADA lower than that, because they don't come every single day. So she's keeping that very conservative. And I don't even know that I can promise you that's conservative enough until we know what we're doing from TA. We know for sure what our funding is, and our parents bring their children back to us. And we're going to lay all of that plan out. I've promised parents in early July, we'll have a plan. I've promised staff in early July, we'll have a plan. But we're still waiting on that final TEA guidance. And then we'll roll all of that out and get those numbers solid for you to know exactly what we should expect in our district, whether it's in-person or virtual for next school year.
So the word was that we would have some word today. And obviously, Commissioner has decided that that's, he needs more time.
He rolled out ADA funding for what he calls asynchronous and synchronous virtual learning, which means the teacher's actually virtually with the child for four hours. Or asynchronous means they're working in a platform or a learning management system for four hours. So funding regarding that was discussed. There was no discussion yet about the in-person and what that would look like. So we can expect funding to be the same. But what about those times where perhaps there's a spike, or a need to flip or pivot to the virtual? Because perhaps a school is closed down, or a classroom is closed down, or the entire district? So there's still a lot of unknowns, a lot of discussions that need to be had. We're very hopeful that those will come to us sooner than later, but we're hearing as late as July 10th as a possibility.
Obviously, we've got a lot of parents out there that are interested and wanting to know what's going to happen with the return of students to the classroom. And I know, I'm sure, and other board members have responded with, you know, we thought we were going to get some concrete answers today. And so now we've been told that it's going to be mid-July.
Possibly. What we are dedicated to is the communicating with parents and getting a survey that will get their feedback by July 7th. So I'll be putting out a video message as well as written brochure, or I call it a pamphlet or brochure of information electronically and hard copy to tell parents what all processes and procedures we're putting in place to keep students and staff safe. And then we'll be surveying them and getting their feedback and their decisions as a family about their own child. And then our staff, getting their feedback on our plan as well. And, you know, it's a fluid situation. No one's been through a pandemic in school district history. So as we get more guidance, we'll adapt, and we'll be ready for what the future holds. You know, the goal is to have all the kids back physically in our presence and engaging with them in all the wonderful ways that we do on a daily basis. But we know that we've got to be very clear to parents with our outline plan, so then they can make the decision if they feel safe enough to send their child back to us. And every kid is different. Some have medical situations, or they're more medically fragile than others. And we're going to respect that and, you know, be able to serve them in a very, I think, very good way. We were in crisis education mode during COVID-19, but we did a great job. And based on the feedback we got, you know, we talked about it before. Some did better than others, whether it was teachers or campuses. But overall, we got a lot of good feedback. But the plan for the fall is even tighter and stronger. But the plan for the fall is even tighter and stronger because we've had time to discuss and train and put pieces in place. So one way or another, whether we're allowed to see the kids 100% face-to-face or if some of those kids choose a virtual option because that's what their parents feel best for, I'm going to be able to feel good and put my head on a pillow at night that we're giving them a quality education.
Well, I have no doubt there. I guess the one thing that has been a little bit of a concern with me is when you have, when you go from the in-person instruction to virtual learning and you have a group of parents that some of them don't know how to operate the computers and the kids, you know, they have some knowledge, some of them don't have any knowledge. And you put those devices in their hands. And then some of them I've heard, you know, are going online once a week or whatever, rather than every day. I mean, school is a daily experience. It's five days a week. And so somehow we've got to, I think, better communicate and prepare our parents, you know, what is expected of their children. Marcell?
You know, and I know you put the four-hour deal, which is ridiculous because not every child learns at the same schedule. So it's not even a competency, you know, did, did I get it? Did I complete my work faster and did I learn it in a shorter period of time? Am I finished or am I just sitting there for four hours just because I have to sit there for four hours? Does it make sense, you know? If, if I need to take four hours because that's how long I take, that's fine. But, you know, it's just like with connect. I mean, I can move at a faster level because that's just my learning level. Not every child's the same, you know? Some may, some may need longer and some may need a shorter period of time. It's just, some may finish quicker. And then what, are they going to shut their computer and then I'm, I'm done? And then what happens with ADA?
And I, you know, I'm hopeful. I will say Chairman Huberty and Chairman Taylor were on the call today with superintendents. And I think they're open to feedback. I think the main thing was accountability. We did a great job providing services for our kiddos. I'm not sure that they felt that was true of every educational entity across the state. So I can't really speak to that. But they want to hold us accountable and I understand that, but.
The point is knowledge transfer.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
Are they learning?
And I think the feedback that we'll give will help with that as well, hopefully. I mean, we can't afford to lose ADA in this district.
Because we don't want them to sit there for eight hours and get nothing.
Right. So we've got a lot of work to do.
Dr. Powell, are we safe in telling parents that we will have some type of a school opening able to teach in August?
You know, I felt very hopeful going into the call today. And then when the commissioner said we're just not ready to talk about that, I can't guarantee anything. Today was a bad day in the state of Texas for COVID positive cases with over 5,000 is my understanding. So I think there will be some guidance given related to that and there'll be some local decision. If we feel it's safe and we know we can provide guidance that will keep kids safe, yes, we're going to be in school in August. But I think it's a fluid situation that changes daily. And we're going to do everything in our power to get the best information and keep students and staff safe at all times. So there, there is a lot of work going on. I can assure everyone, we've got people in every area, whether it's transportation, child nutrition, athletics, fine arts. The curriculum team has worked themselves silly. But just everybody thinking about what it looks like from the time the kids get to the bus to the time they get to the building, what they need to do to stay safe throughout the day and then what dismissal looks like and all those extracurricular and wonderful activities we provide outside of the school day. So there's a lot of moving parts, but we're, we're going to be ready to roll that out. Hopefully no later than July 7th, which was our plan, with perhaps added layers to that July 10th, if that's when we get further information from TA.
I know that we've all said this, but it bears repeating. I appreciate all that the district has done thus far for students, for our employees. You know, I think we've been sensitive to everyone's needs and I think that we will be in the future. They need to understand that our hands are tied and that we've got to operate under certain guidelines. And it's not always what we want for the kids, but it's what is required.
Absolutely.
So, anyway, okay, let's move on. Did we vote on this one?
We did, you don't need to.
No.
Oh, okay, I, okay, all right. So let's move to the operations section then. Consideration possible approval for the sale of a 50-foot wide right-of-way pipeline easement to Easton Energy Pipelines LLC located west end of the Pearl Hall Elementary School site. Second. Well, motion by Ms. Sullivan, was that you, Mr. Kendrick?
No.
Okay, Mr. Roberts, okay. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Looking at the construction update, do we have any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's move on to the miscellaneous section. We don't have any public comments. Consideration and possible approval of mediation agreement in AG versus Pasadena ISD, Texas Education Agency Docket number 081-dm-0320 and related actions. Ms. Kiana?
I move to approve the mediation agreement in AG versus Pasadena Independent School District, Texas Education Agency Docket number 081-dm-0320 as discussed in executive session.
Second. A motion by Ms. Kiana, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is to appoint the board committees. And you have that in front of you. Should, do I need to read this out? Okay, Personnel Committee, Marcell Kiana Chairperson, Nova Sullivan and Marshall Kendrick Members. Policy Legislative Committees, Fred Roberts Chairperson, Kenny Fernandez, Jack Bailey Members. Facility Committee, Nova Sullivan Chairperson, Kenny Fernandez, Fred Roberts Members. Naming Committee, Marshall Kendrick Chairperson, all board members, members. Budget Committee, Jack Bailey Chairperson and all board members or members. Then set the date for the next regular meeting, Tuesday, July 21st, 2020.
We've made it that due to graduation, just to let you know. We made it that Tuesday due to graduation being the next week.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carried. And this meeting is adjourned at 8:31 PM.